We'll keep that.
Yeah.
Yeah. She thought was kept in that. I call this more the fashion of style. Because this is not a blanking water. Check for your salt. That's what I was trying to say. The first part. Very similar. There's a ton of county.
Something about the.
Oh, yeah. And they really don't have time. They don't have time. Well, she thought was kept in that. I call this more the fashion of style. Because this is not a blanking water. Check for your salt. That's what I was trying to say. After a while. It's just a lot. What she thought was kept in that. I call this more the fashion of style. Because this is not a blanking water. Check for your salt. That's what I was trying to say. After a while. The first part. I'm calling out the words from the old. And the word I can't remember. It's not a lot. It's not a lot. They're not wearing that thing. Very similar. There's a ton of county.
Something about the.
Oh, yeah. And they really don't have time. They don't have time. And that's why. That's why I'm sorry. Um, you know. You know, yeah. That's what I'm considering. That's why I'm sorry. This is a very. With the, with my. We thought we were the voters in my. It's all. Your voice. Their voice. Okay. Actually, I will, I'm going to get my. Going after it. It's more on the, on the square. My territory. Well, last week. Tomorrow. She said, I said, don't tell them. I said, I'm sorry. I said, I'm sorry. But it fell over. Good. See, but I didn't agree. If I could rig that front cover. But now, if I can do it, I can do it now. Second bit, I can do it now. Okay. Now, I'm starting to think. So the third one for the year.
Yeah, the middle one.
That is four.
Yeah.
About four.
Yeah, it's not, it's probably.
Oh, and I can just think of it. That's all. Down there, I'm looking at the law. Then we look down. Actually, they put that. Always that. Third part.
Okay, so come on. Council meeting. You like, I mean, January eighteenth, two thousand nineteen. You have. You have men, wives, ladies.
I'd like to make sure the special call has somebody.
Okay. We have motion to approve the second. I have. All in favor?
I move that we utilize the council meeting minutes of December eighteen.
Okay, you have motion to approve the minutes of the council meeting. December eighteenth, two thousand nineteen.
All right.
All right. Okay, ma'am.
Uh, we need to swear, can you?
What I think you should do is recall that if you say I do, you want to repeat it. Please, sir, that way it's easier.
All right. I, thank you. A citizen of Vero County, I would be hereby solemnly swear and affirm that I will well and truly and faithfully discharge the duties of the city clerk of the city of St. Louis, Georgia, that I would support and defend the Constitution and laws of the state of Georgia and the United States of America, and I will in all respects observe the provisions of the Charter in accordance with the city's statute. I do further solemnly swear and affirm that I am not the holder of any unaccounted for public money in this state or any political subdivision or authority thereof, that I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States, any other state, or any foreign state which by the laws of the state of Georgia have prohibited from polling, and I am otherwise qualified to hold the office of city clerk according to the Constitution and laws of Georgia.
All right, first, on the, we got the whole business, uh, the Home Rule amendments provisions to the city card. We have discussion on that.
How much could you refresh our memories as to this part of the Home Rule?
Yeah, the, the, this particular one, the one that you all can do yourselves by Home Rule is the one that would change, um, the procedure by which you all can adopt ordinances whereby you all can adopt, um, an ordinance with just in one meeting without a second reading and not having to go through two readings in two separate meetings. Um, we talked about it on Thursday night, and, um, as we discussed, um, it's really not necessary under the city's business sometimes streamline things regarding the domain and things like that. Um, but effectively, you all can do adoption ordinance within a week by having a special call meeting. So, um, it's for your consideration. It, it's properly before you, you all can adopt it tonight, but, um, I'm sure it's gonna be.
And I need to clarify in my mind, uh, you said that, uh, if one council member votes against an amendment, uh, the other four agree with it, it will have to have a second reading.
That's correct. The way that, the, the way this one works is that any, any council member or the mayor, even though the mayor does not normally, any, any of the elected officials require it to be set over two at a moment.
And so, uh, we're only talking about those, uh, ordinance or whatever that the council was completely clear on. Uh, so if one person is concerned or confused or anything else, it would.
Or absent. Everybody's gotta be there and everybody's gotta be in it.
I make the motion for efficiency, uh, to approve this amendment.
Okay, we have motion to approve. Second.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Three.
All against?
Two.
Two.
Okay.
All right, let's move on.
Okay. Uh, new business, rolling over vacation hours. Um, as explained last Thursday, um, I'm making recommendations that we need to allow employees to roll over a minimum of eighty hours to the next year, to allow, um, any employees that are hired in December to be able to use up their time by the end of December. That is what we currently have set up now. Or the second option is to allow employees hired in December to use the vacation over the next three months instead of losing it in December. And the third option I gave was hiring at the end of November.
Okay, we have question.
Well, I've been reading, gotten the book out, and read the personnel book. But nowhere in there does it say that if you're hired in December, your anniversary day is up in December, that you have to take that vacation before the end of the year. The way I understand the personnel policy, you have until your next vacation comes around to take it. That's why we schedule after we have been, been here a year, then we schedule when we want it. And I just think we need to link things as is. Rolling over eighty hours. If the employee decides after, say they've been here two years, uh, whenever their second week comes up and they've already laid for eighty hours, suppose if they decide that they're gonna, well, they want the whole month off, then you're tying up a vacancy for one month. But that might be rolling your own. It was working fine like it's always been.
No, because how we have it in the manual is that when you turn one year, you get your hours. And.
But it does say you got to take them within a certain days. It says you schedule when you want it.
It says if you don't use it by December, you lose it.
Well, I understand that part. I think that I read it again. In the meantime, I would like to table this and let us think about it a little bit more. That's my motion to table.
Okay, we have motion, second, to table. All in favor? Okay.
Okay, moving on, um, to the second item, set qualify for two thousand nineteen elections. Uh, three percent of the mayor's salary is, uh, three hundred sixty dollars, and three percent of the council is one hundred eighty dollars.
I make the motion, wait for set.
I'll second it.
All right, we have motion with set. Second it. All in favor? Okay, thank you.
Next item is appoint election superintendent to do the qualify, and that would be our city clerk.
I make the motion also to set her for the second superintendent.
Okay, we have motion. I already did.
Okay.
We have a candidate.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Okay.
Number five, uh, we need to ask our new city clerk to bend accounts. So she can.
I make a motion, we, we add Kay to our bank accounts. Sure, sir?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion, second. All in favor?
And then, um, number six, um, I know I went over last Thursday, but, um, we do need your approval to, um, for the county to go ahead and authorize, um, to give us, um, the ser, the water service area on the Glen Jackson Road, and then, uh, we can, we're gonna give those, um, parcels that, that we do not provide water to replace in, because also in our sewer area that we don't provide water to, so we can't service sewer if we don't provide water to it. So we're gonna give up those two parts, not two, I don't know, a few parcels, so they can give us, um, the Glen Jackson.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
But it would receive a hundred houses.
Yes, up to, uh, the whole area.
Right, okay, the whole area. Actually, more so.
Yes.
Okay.
I make that motion.
I second that.
Okay, very, I'm voting second. All in favor? Okay.
Let me ask a quick question. We don't have sewer out there.
No.
Yeah.
Uh, probably, it'll probably, well, we just now, what, we, if we go and do it, we should have already done it because, uh, we just now lived in a hundred houses where we could have made, but I don't know, I don't think they wanted it, did they? I mean, I don't think they considered, but it still would be a costly factor to get us that far.
Should, should have went in when they developed.
That whole, had his farm. But, I mean, it is feasible, but you already lost four hundred houses in the last fourteen years.
Yeah.
So I'm stopping.
But we have the option.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, moving on to, uh, the citizens' concerns. First of all, we have Sean Murphy, um, just gonna talk about approval of the flat with legislative statute. Sean, are you here?
I'm not here.
Oh, they're not here? Okay.
Uh, John, question, says we, that's brought up. Did they have to pass all tests yet for the sewers and wat, and water pressure test?
No.
Okay.
And they have some other things.
That's fine, I mean, well, we're not gonna prove anything until that's. I'm, I, I'm not proving it myself until all that's in order.
So they finished developing the sewage across the street, but it hasn't been tested?
Well, they're testing there and testing then.
The sewage, I mean, it's all across the street, it's passed. There's still questions about the sewer that's been installed in there for the last four years.
Oh, and the water.
Yeah. What's, what's already there?
Correct.
Okay.
Oh, because it's been set since two thousand seven. Okay.
Right.
Uh, not as many as it could be, but they've corrected quite a few. Is that not correct, John?
Right.
And now they own the water and, uh, they still have a few issues.
Yeah, they're making progress, it's still not completed yet.
Right. And we still have some issues with the, actually, the planning of the, the road stuff. We still got some questions, but they got, didn't get that, so we're, so we worked that out.
Do we want to table it?
Well, we're gonna table it, but we stopped by, you know, to talk about.
Actually, there's no reason to table it.
Well, first of all, you guys can approve anything, yes.
Right.
They have not submitted the flat, the final flat, you know.
It's a lot.
And they have to pay the fee, so you guys can't do anything.
Yeah, it's definitely. I got lots to do, yeah.
Just, just a real quick note, the, the reason I did the vote for the, the Home Rule and the waiving of the second reading was because things develop over, over the thirty days, that when we have an issue come up, or, you know, there's a concern or whatever, a lot more often than not, we need those thirty days. Sometimes, I, I've seen things developing, you know, in that thirty day period where, you know, um, in the approval process, it's, it's paid off because, you know, new things come to light, so, there's. But I think one thing I do like about it is that it requires, in order to utilize it, it requires, uh, a unanimous, uh, vote.
But, and, and you said that, I would hope that it is very critical enough for, be for the public to, us and the public, we need, you know, we, we had the option.
Right.
And so, if it's not super proof or just something simple, then yes, you know, but it, I hope we have enough flexibility to, yeah, look at it in that manner that you're speaking about.
Okay, let's move on.
Okay, and next one on the agenda is Catherine Corcoran, just gonna talk about the Home Rule and finance.
So tall enough on what we're speaking about a minute ago, Dwight. Um, essentially, what three of you just voted for was a vote to, um, to prove your citizens from having time to weigh in on an issue that you may think is simplified and only requires one, one reading and then a vote, but you don't know what each of your citizens may think of that. So essentially, there's never a need for emergency law, there's.
That's your opinion.
Emergency actions.
Right, that's your opinion.
And Mr. Mitchell explained a moment ago that in fact you could institute a new ordinance in only a week by holding a special, uh, special call meeting. Now, having said that, um, this meeting is being held, um, against the open meetings law currently. The reason that it is, is because the agenda was not posted according to the law having to regulate of the meetings. The agenda for this week is essentially identical to the agenda that was on January the tenth. The, the items that are on this agenda are essentially the same as the ones that are on this agenda tonight, and what the open meetings law requires is that an agenda must be posted as far in advance as possible, and the reason for that relates back to letting your citizens know what will be on that agenda so that they can make their decisions about whether or not they should be here, um, to hear or talk about, or make their opinions known. Um, and that's not able to be done when you have an agenda that's posted at five o'clock the day before, which has been the city's practice now for years that I know about. Now, again, relating to finances and the open meetings and open records law, um, Mr. Powell, every month since, I think it was December two thousand sixteen, that may have been January two thousand seventeen, has been recording meetings for the city. Um, and many months, I request a copy of that video. However, you all have a Facebook page that an employee is paid to take care of, that's a place where those videos could be posted. Um, Mr. Powell should have recorded in these last few years about sixty meetings. That's about sixty meetings that the public should have free and open access to look at at the time these meetings take place, or go back and look at any time that they feel the need to. You've got a Facebook page, somebody's there to post on it, it should be utilized, you know.
One of the reasons we can't do that is because we're fulfilling your open records request at a rate that doesn't allow the city to do its normal operations.
Let her have her time.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get the review on that.
Okay. Let her have her, let her have her time.
Just saying, you know, you have to admit that, that the load that you place on the city.
I completely disagree with you, totally. And in fact, I pay for the city, uh, the city workers' times when I'm making the emergency request, and I pay far too much for what I am given. Just going back to the recordings and the meetings, Dwight, I'm charged an hour and a half of labor for Mr. Powell to copy a CD onto another CD. That's fraud. So, um, and going back to finance and the Open Meetings Act, every open record request that is made, especially by me and several other people, is sent to Mr. Mitchell to approve. That's not normal or necessary. These are very run-of-the-mill requests, many of them, um, but don't need his approval. There is a book, um, that I have here, and I've given it to a few of you before, to be very simply, in a question and answer form, any sixth grader would be able to follow it, and not need the advice of Mr. Mitchell. And I have emailed this to Ms. Fortney, I'm going to give you a copy of it tonight, just so that you will know.
Okay, excuse me, what, what did you give her?
It is the Open Meetings and Open Records Guide, and it also.
That you requested?
Say that again.
That you requested?
That I requested?
Yeah.
No, it's, it's.
It's our, it's our guide.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. Um, it's also very similar to the guide that is written by the Vero County Attorney, Angela Davis. Um, and her advice has been disregarded, um, as far as open records go, and she's the county attorney, which would supersede the advice of the city attorney. Um, so I'm going to again state that this, this meeting was being held in violation of open meetings law, and to participate in this meeting any further means that you are participating against the law, and it's a misdemeanor. So I'm gonna say that, and now I'm gonna sit down, and you can do with that as you will.
Thank you. Okay, ma'am.
Okay, next is Tammy Trolley, just gonna talk about the Home Rule amendment.
I'll be pretty quick on this one. Um, the, the Home Rule amendment, I understand that some things will be streamlined and then, and like, you know, I, I want to say you said something similar to the fact that we hoped, we would entrust in you to, you know, to make some decisions, but at the same time, some of the citizens are feeling that they're just trying to set it off. Uh, you know, not everybody knows what special meetings are, uh, it, it, sometimes, you know, we would like to be heard, and sometimes we would like to say our opinion and hopeful, you know, because it, it, obviously, each one of y'all don't feel the same way about everything, or everything will be voted on the same thing all the time. You would always agree, or you would always disagree. Well, the citizens kind of feel the same way. You know, we don't always all agree, and we don't always all disagree, but one thing that we do, or I can say, is that, you know, when you have states that are voted in by the citizens, then it shouldn't be a problem for you to listen to the citizens, you know, when something comes up. Uh, I'm not talking about, you know, minor things, I, 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 you know, but it's something that might be minor to one person.
Come on, get minor view.
Right.
On the budget.
Right. You know, and it just becomes, you know, we feel like, you know, maybe, you know, mine would close the shutters out, you know? There, that's my opinion, I know. Um, but, you know, sometimes streamline things is, is, is great, it's a good way to go, you don't have to invest all the time, but sometimes it's not always worth it, though. Basically, it's all, you know, I, I just, I personally don't agree with it, you know, you know, I personally think the citizens and people should be talked about, should be discussed, uh, if something's not understood completely, things like that.
Thank you, Tammy.
Do we have any executive session?
Yes, to talk about this position, possible this position.
New motion?
I make the motion to.
Um, usually, I'm personally.
Okay, excuse me, I didn't hear you.
Um, nice, it's sixteen.
Can we talk about that for a minute? Before we go to executive session?
Sure. I, I don't know.
Um, basically, it's what's, what you have there, uh, he's gonna finish it by the end of the month, but, um.
Ma, could I interrupt this a minute? My and I, last week, I asked him, would you go to Mr. Hawkins', uh, business with me? Uh, I didn't wanna go by myself, and we went up and talked to him and talked about what you and I, Michelle, and Ma talked about in September last year.
Right.
And that, I asked. Okay, Ma.
Okay, next, this is Sammy Trolley, just gonna talk about the home rule amendment.
I'll be pretty quick on this one. Um, the, the home rule amendment, I understand that some things will be streamlined and then, and like, you know, I, I wanna say you said something similar to the fact that we hope that we would entrust in you to, you know, to make some decisions, but at the same time, some of the citizens are feeling that you're just trying to cut it off. Uh, you know, not everybody knows what special meetings are, uh, it, it, sometimes, you know, we would like to be heard, and sometimes we would like to say our opinion, and hopeful, you know, 'cause it, it, obviously, each one of y'all don't feel the same way about everything, or everything will be voted on the same thing all the time. You would always agree, or you'd always disagree. Well, the citizens kind of feel the same way. You know, we don't always all agree, we don't always all disagree. But one thing that we do, or I can say is that, you know, when you have states that are voted in by the citizens, then it shouldn't be a problem for you to listen to the citizens, you know, when something comes up. Uh, I'm not talking about, you know, minor things, I, I, you know, but something that might be minor to one person.
Come back and monitor you.
Right.
On the budget, you know.
Right. You know, and it just becomes, you know, we feel like, you know, maybe, you know, mine would close to shut it down, you know? There again, that's my opinion, I know. Um, but, you know, sometimes streamlined things is, is, is great, it's a good way to go, you don't have to invest all the time, but sometimes it's not always worth it, though. Basically, it is all, you know, I, I just, I personally don't agree with it, you know, you know. I personally think the citizens and people should be talked about, should be discussed, uh, if something's not understood completely, and things like that.
Thank you, Terry.
Do we have the executive session?
Yes, to talk about this position, possible this position.
New motion?
We have a motion.
I make the motion, we should go and do.
Okay, excuse me, I didn't hear you.
Um, next, Assistant.
Can we talk about that for a minute? Before we go to executive session?
Sure. Ma, you want to go?
Um, basically, it's what's, what you have there. Uh, he's gonna finish it by the end of the month, that's, um...
Ma, can I interrupt this a minute? Ma and I, last Wednesday, I asked him, would you go to Mr. Hawkins', uh, business with me? Uh, I didn't wanna go by myself, and we went up and talked to him, talked about what you and I, Michelle and Ma talked about in September last year.
Right.
And, but I asked him why he has not completed. Well, there again, as you see, he blamed Woody, he, well, he blamed Woody.
He was pretty blunt, you said.
And, uh, so, actually, he has to be on the agenda tonight if he has some positive information. Now, he's sick, so we don't know what, if he has any back. I will follow up on that, uh, probably Thursday myself. I, I mean, Ma, Ma might go with me, uh, but I will go speak to Woody personally. I have not, we talked to Jared, and he's wanted, gave us some information and promised us he'd work on Thursday, Friday, and give us a report, but, uh, I don't call this one a report, but...
So we're talking about the sixteen.
Right, well...
We're talking about the home.
Right.
Yeah, just going to your...
Well, not, we're not in eighteen, I mean, we don't have, we gotta have the other... But, yeah, that's where I was going with it all, yeah.
He promised us, when, when we got fifteen done, he could generally, or reasonably, in about three months.
That's exactly. And then the new one.
Each one of them gets, get a run, and that was...
Well, I mean, it, it is a very inadequate work, I mean, it's just not been done properly. And at this point in time, it's too late to tell three of them, but we didn't, didn't stay on top of them.
Yes, we can.
We see that. I mean, well, we knew it was a problem, but it's become more of a problem at this point in time.
Can we clarify that you're talking about the autumn?
We, yeah, it is autumn, yes.
This going year sixteen.
This, exactly. And so, as this is done, we'll go with thirteen, but I don't, we gotta get past sixteen for it, yeah. And it's supposed to be finished by the, well, the conversation's September by the end of the year, and that's why I thought I went done with that, 'cause it's not completed, and I was not satisfied with that, so... Still not, yeah. But that's, I mean, that's all we got to report at this time.
Yeah, so basically, what you, what you're reading there is what it is. I don't have any other suggestions.
And, okay, we are gonna continue to be more persistent on pushing it to get done. That is my, definitely my goal, it was my goal earlier, last year, or late last year, and now it's rolled over this year already, and, uh, so we can't be complete by the end of the month.
And Ma, can you assure us that the accounting practices that are in place now will ensure that we don't end up in the same situation ever again?
Um, I can try to, once I have our new city clerk fully trained, I can start focusing on that in our financial...
Because personnel-wise, we, we stand, you know, we're, we're in the weeds again, personnel-wise, uh, training-wise, accounting-wise, all this stuff is, you know, we're back at the beginning. So I think it's important to keep an eye on accounting practices.
We do, that very important.
Well, let me tell you, let me tell all the council members. Anytime y'all wanna drop by there and ask a question, drop by there and ask a question, 'cause I can get another one.
Well, I mean, you know, don't get me wrong, right here, Tim, saying that he says, uh, you know, cleared up the first quarter two thousand seventeen and not ready for the start, but I mean, he's, I mean, he's just saying, it's, well, you're just hoping he's gonna hold what he says. You know, that's my two cents, I don't agree with that kind of explanation at the end of the...
Okay.
Professional statement.
All right. We have a motion to go and take it session.
I make that motion.
I'll second it.
All, all in favor? Thank you.